6:31, I'll call the public hearing to order. This is a public hearing. Today is Wednesday, April 17th. Time is, like I said, 6:31. It's a public hearing for a subdivision, minor subdivision of an approximately 134-acre lot to be divided into two lots of approximately 89.2 acres and approximately 44.8 acres. Location, 961 Branch Brook Road. Property owners, Vincent and Maurice Turco. Participation in this hearing is a prerequisite to the right to take any subsequent appeal. So anyone who wants to appeal any part of this proceeding needs to be present tonight. People are free to make public comments remotely by email. Have you received any that you're aware of? I'm not aware of any either. So the way this works is it should be pretty straightforward. We're just going to follow along in our procedure and we'll have a chance to ask any questions and interested parties may also. So the first item on the agenda here is, I'll ask for any commissioners to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. Does anybody have any that they need to disclose? Andy? No? Okay. That's great, we'll move right along. I don't have the statute printed out for the definition of interested persons, but I think for the sake of this proceeding, abutting landowners are allowed to be interested parties and they have certain rights afforded to them. Does anybody believe that they are an interested person or interested party?
This is Robert Johnson. My brother Roy and I are an interested party. We own a piece of land just to the north of Mo and Turco's land and we have no objection whatsoever to the subdivision.
Okay, great, so the first thing is to, I think that, in my opinion, we are aware of the property location of the Johnsons. Is anybody opposed to identifying them as an interested party? Andy? Okay. So we'll accept your interested party status. Is there anyone else who believes they are an interested party to this hearing? Okay. I'll note there are no other interested parties present. Let's see, next step. I'm going to ask the representative or representatives of the owners and for the application to take an oath. I don't know if we have quite a few possible representatives, but maybe perhaps the brothers, the owners, would like to take the oath. Would both of you like to be put under oath to testify at this hearing? It's easy enough. All right, I'll do you both at the same time if that's okay with you, because I don't have to read it twice. Let's see, here. I'll just ask you to repeat after me. I hereby swear that the evidence...
I hereby swear that the evidence...
Yeah. I give in the cause under consideration...
In the cause under consideration?
Shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Okay, you are now both under oath. So now we are going to acknowledge the written information that is pertinent or relevant to this application. We have the application form completed in its entirety. Correct?
Yep.
We do? And we have the final plat in two copies of paper form and one of Mylar. Is that right? Okay. Is there anything else that we should be aware of? Any other documentation to support the application? Chris, do you have anything, any additional information or documentation?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. I will invite either one of you or any of you to present any information you'd like to share with the commission to support your proposal. You may wish to or you may not, it's up to you. No?
Pass.
Pass? Okay. Double pass?
Yeah.
Triple pass? Chris, are you passing as well or would you like to say anything?
Triple, triple pass.
All right, triple pass. Trifecta.
You've probably got enough to do tonight.
Yeah, we'll go through as quickly as possible. We'll try to do you a favor here and be efficient. Let's see what else we got here. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicants?
I think we've had them all answered.
All right. Going pretty well so far. So we've asked the applicant and the applicant's representative. And now I'll invite interested persons to make any further statements. I know, Mr. Johnson, you've already given your initial statement, but do you have anything else you'd like to add or ask the applicants or the commission?
No, nothing further, but just to restate, no objection to the application.
Okay. I will note that the interested party, Mr. Johnson, has no objection. Are there any members of the public who do not have interested person status who have any comments or questions about the application or proposal? All right, I don't hear any. We don't have to limit debate, so let's move on. Are there any final comments or questions from anyone? Well, this will be a record. I've never heard this town have nothing to say about something. But, okay.
This is a simple one.
Well, we're, we have a, does anybody want to examine the final plat?
All the changes that we've asked for.
So just so, everyone here is aware of how this works is we will, if there are no further questions and no further comments, we will adjourn the hearing. At that point, the commission will be in a deliberative session, which means we get to decide. And that can take, I forget what the timeline is, but it's several weeks. But it's very unlikely that we will need much time at all since there were no, essentially no comments and everything thus far has been done. And then we will issue a written decision and that will, then we will be able to, if it's approved, sign the plat and then that will be recorded. I am inclined to take a motion to close the hearing unless there's anything further from the commissioners.
I will reclose the hearing.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Don't fight over it, I'm going to enter. All in favor of adjournment of this public hearing?
Aye.
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 All right, well, thank you all for your attendance.
If I may be so rude as to interrupt, I'd just say, like to say hello to my fellow alum, Christopher Cassones. I did my LLM at BU in, I think, '84, but I've forgotten because it's so long ago.
I was 85.
85?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, small world.
But my undergraduate alma mater spanked them, Denver University. They went all the way, they beat BU in the semifinals and BC in the finals and won their 10th NCAA hockey championship.
Yeah, I mean, we get a little disappointed when we can't go 1 or 2 or 2 or 1 with both the locals, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry for the hockey talk, but you'd have to do it.
Perhaps we should continue the hearing a little longer so we could consider that.
Well, thank you for bringing a levity to ordinarily pretty dry proceedings. All right, well, thank you all. Thanks all for attending. Take care.
Thanks very much, folks.
So as I said, we are now in a deliberative session which will last some time. And we'll have, the commission will set a time and date to meet and discuss the application. And we'll let you, actually, the administrative officer will let you know as soon as we have any information for you. I guess the last thing that wasn't officially part of the application or request is, were you able to find that pre-existing survey that...
I haven't, I forgot it.
Okay.
I'll bring it to you though.
I know David would be happy to see it and...
Oh, I don't owe him anything.
I think a number, I would be interested in having it if it means anything to you, so. Those kinds of pieces of history of the town are worth keeping. Well, thank you all. That's it.
That's it.
That's it. I'm going to call the meeting to order, 7 o'clock. Regular meeting of the Mount Holly Planning Commission for Wednesday, April 17th. First order, first item on the agenda is a consideration of any changes to the agenda. And I have one under subdivision proposals. I neglected to add discussion of setting a date and time for a deliberative session for the Turco subdivision. So I'll just stick that in before 1:58. Anything else? I think so. All right. Agenda is approved. Next is, we have, I think it's just one set of minutes because we're now thankfully doing one meeting a month.
March 20.
March 20 meeting minutes have been distributed. Has everyone had a chance to read them, review them? Yeah? Any updates, changes, additions, corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I will approve the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Seconded, good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it, minutes approved, thank you. Faith?
Nothing to report from my side.
Cool. Why don't we just move in right along?
I like that.
I have, I think, just a couple of quick things. As you, I think you all know by now, there is an Act 250 application into the state for, I think it's for Master Plumbing on Route 103 next to Wright Construction. I can't remember the applicant.
Is that between Wright and that trailer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think it's actually on Wright Construction's parcel.
I'm just curious its physical location.
Yeah, they've got it staked out now, I think. I think it had existing jurisdiction from Wright Construction's project, so it's sort of just...
Moving along.
Yeah, moving along. So the last, of course, so we are copied on all of that information and the select board is as well. And I think the last communication was their application is incomplete, so the state needs a little bit more information. And I'll keep you posted as we hear more. I don't know much about it other than that.
I don't think anybody knows.
It's a 6,300 square foot building with a warehouse on the ground floor and two apartments above.
That's right, so it is a mixed-use residential and... Let's see, I think that was mainly it. I guess the other thing I learned at the Regional Planning Commission, are we doing sign-ins?
Uh...
Do you need them? We probably don't need them. Okay. Hi. You're welcome to have a seat if you'd like.
Well, that's all right, I've been sitting a while.
Okay. At the Regional Planning Commission, there was some discussion about the legislatures going, spinning their wheels on a new update to the open meeting law to extend the COVID-era emergency order type stuff. And apparently, there's quite a lot of stuff in there. So we'll have to monitor that, how that goes because there could be a pretty big impact on small towns and small boards like ours and the rules. I think one of the things that I heard discussed was that we have to not only do recordings, but thankfully, we have somebody helping us. They have to be like posted that day online or the next day or something like that. So we'll keep our ears open for that. I think that's about it. Moving into subdivision proposals. Let's do, let's do Mr. Garrel first. We'll do that right after.
I don't have anything further to bring to state. Haven't got back to me yet with any other permit from the state, so.
Okay. So the last week, I think, if my memory serves, is you were going to contact them for what their current requirements are for, let's call it a deferral of permit or some other kind of...
It's not a deferral permit.
Right, there is no such thing. Some other permitting.
What happened was, back in the day, way, way back, you used to have a 10.1-acre clause in the town. You didn't have to have any septic requirements while you had 10.1 acres or more. 2007 is when they swept, the state swept all of that under their purview and they did away with any size restrictions. So it didn't matter if you had 200 acres or 2 acres or 1 acre. You had to have a wastewater permit.
Right.
A wastewater discharge permit. So that's when they swept all of that back under their purview. And that's why I would think that, you know, as busy as you guys are, that you would want to let them take care of all of them issues with wastewater disposal. And that's where the language comes from. That's what the Gallopi A&amp;R told me.
Yeah.
Was that's why they do that, because it's just a waste of time for their, on their part, reviewing and going through these, the permit applications, they don't go anywhere. You know, if I were to have to go out and design septic systems for the property that nobody's going to use, it's a burden of time to me and expense. If the language is indeed that states that the person, whoever is... And I don't have a clue as to who's going to die or what they want to do.
Right.
So I can't really, I mean, there was a lot of assumptions tossed around last week about me having to do curb cuts and road cuts and all of this stuff. And it's like, if I don't know what somebody's going to do with the property, there's really nothing I can do.
Other than not subdivide and sell all of it, but that's correct.
But that's my property. It's my property. If I choose and I want to subdivide it, I should be entitled to subdivide.
Well, you're entitled to follow the rules.
I am following the rules.
No, I'm just telling you, there's a law in this town and we have to follow it just as much as you.
Well, it's...
So let's leave that conversation there. There seems to be at least a couple of things that were also outstanding. There was a discussion about what we thought was a dispute on the boundary lines. Has there been any resolution?
It's not a boundary dispute. The monuments are set. I had contacted Maya Terme, I talked to him. He says, "Island, the monuments are set." And they were done by their dad. Charlie is the one that had the first survey done of it. None of that land had ever been surveyed.
Everyone's the one that did.
And that's where, no, the dates of the surveys, if you look at them, Charlie's was on an 89, my mom's did it in 90. So they were close to each other, but they were not at the same time. The other thing about the not moving the monument, if you look at the maps of the road frontage of that 1-acre lot, it clearly depicts a stone wall that rained continuously down through there. That's where that monument was. There was at least 2 to 3 feet of fill brought in to bring that road frontage up for their access now. So they had to have moved that monument.
No, it wasn't.
Nobody's moved that. And nobody's going to move it.
Okay, we're...
Understand where they are and...
We're going to talk to each other. We have to talk to the commission.
That's it, don't argue. I'll fight this forever.
My, just wanted to be clear, I mean, I have no issues here.
Okay, well, this is the situation I think we were in last week and it's a little bit unclear to us, is we're hearing you say there's no boundary dispute. But then, moments later, there seems to be a dispute over the location of monuments that mark the boundaries. I mean, I'm just a little confused in what's happening.
Well, do you really wish to open that can of worms where somebody can merely come into this board and say that they disagree with where a monument is placed by a surveyor that gets replicated in multiple occasions? And the only one disputing it?
You've been disputing this thing since day one, since we built this piece of property.
Yeah, all you guys. The pins, nobody's filled over, no pins.
No.
We did all fill in here, but the...
You bring your lawyer right to us. I don't care, we have nothing to friggin' hide.
No, nobody's moving the pins.
We have nothing to hide and we're not moving the pins.
No, nobody's putting our well over our well. I don't care, I'll fight it right to the end.
So you are represented by a lawyer in this matter?
That's good.
Yes.
Okay, so one thing that we advised or recommended last week is that you add to your application form to make your lawyer an authorized representative.
I will do so.
Okay, who can come to our meetings and talk with us and explain your position or his position or her position, whatever. And so we could just get past this, right? Because I mean, this doesn't seem like it's getting anybody anywhere if we just have meeting after meeting where you moved pins, we didn't move pins.
I'm in a lot serious, how can I? You know, I've already had a surveyor come in and he took all of the related documents and he located that monument.
Yeah, all four corners are there, so what's the issue?
The location of where it is.
So that's not our fault. They were there since day one. I've been there, what, 30 some odd years? And those pins have been there this long? And now there's the issue because you're selling it? So it's not my problem.
Also, I'll ask the commission, because I think we asked last week that there be an authorized representative. But it seems to me like both the surveyor and the lawyer can be authorized to speak with us and then we can start trying to get to the bottom of this. If you're saying the surveyor, you're saying the surveyor has reviewed the, all of the information and has come to a conclusion, we'd like to talk to them and hear from him or her. Because, you know, this is hearsay, he said, she said stuff.
It's in the maps that they created that I submitted. That's where they located the pins.
That's fine, but you're also telling us it's at odds with the location on the ground, the location that your neighbor understands to be the boundary marker and an existing recorded survey.
Yes, so they are...
And, hold on, we're not going to...
We're not going to...
Mr. Garrel, we're not going to speak over the chair today.
Can I ask something?
We're going to stay in order here.
Can I ask something?
Let me finish what I was saying. It appears to me that whether or not your surveyor, who is apparently a licensed surveyor in Vermont, finds that their information disagrees with a monument that is located on the ground today, apparently for decades, a recorded survey in the Mount Holly Land Records and another survey that has been produced by your neighbor by another licensed surveyor, two licensed surveyors, that is at odds with what you're saying. So that leaves, unfortunately, that leaves us in a very uncomfortable position.
Those two surveyors are not at odds.
Which two?
They located Mulcahy, Debbie McCade, and Ralph Michaels. Both of their drawings reflect the same spot.
Deborah Daniels and Ralph Michael.
Yes.
I'll take your word for it that they agree, but you're saying they don't agree with your surveyor or your surveyor does not agree with them. Is that what you're saying?
They don't agree with those three surveyors on the location of that one monument.
Wait, which?
That's what they're saying.
So one monument now? Or is it the one that's along the road in this supposed stone wall?
Yes.
Okay. Carol, you had a question?
Yeah, I got a question. All right, so going through this deeds, in the deeds, it actually does not state, it just stands... What is it? I'm going to read the deed. It doesn't actually state so far from this road, so far from that, it's like giving boundaries.
That's correct.
Okay, but my question is, is you're saying where the monument is or the stake is in the ground is not the right spot? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying where you guys put it.
No, no, that ain't what we're saying. You're saying...
Because they found it, Mulcahy found it, Ralph Michaels said it when he did the original survey because that 1-acre lot, it was referred to as a 1-square-acre lot. It was a transaction that occurred back in the 1800s for some purpose.
Does this monument have a cap on it with Ralph's?
I don't know, I have never seen it. I have never seen it. The rest, a lot of these things are just plain pieces of the rebar.
There's caps on it, it says Ralph Michaels on there.
Does it?
Yes, I can't verify to that because I haven't gone to look.
So you're saying that you haven't put eyes on these monuments?
No. I trust Aaron there.
The surveyor has...
I trusted my licensed surveyor.
He's looked at them.
Okay, well, we need to speak to them. If you don't have actual knowledge of what you're saying, then we need to speak to the person who does to move forward.
Who gives them the right to go and put them on, go on our property too.
What's that?
No permission to go on our property or run our pins.
Well, the way those usually work, I mean, you're abutting landowners, so that's a shared piece of property, that corner point. I think it's fair to say no one has permission to move them, but surveyors are authorized to take shots on them and find the location. Vermont gives surveyors a pretty broad authority to enter property.
They surveyed them, they were there.
But my question is, why is it now, all of a sudden, a big issue after 30, what, 3 years?
Well, it's an issue because the town is being asked to...
I know, but, yeah. But you would think after all these years, why is it all of a sudden a big issue? I can understand the surveying part of it, where our, my father paid to have the survey legally recorded. And it was Aunt Evelyn and Uncle Bill's choice not to have theirs recorded.
Right.
That Deb Daniels did. So I don't understand what's the differences now if you're going on one. And my understanding, and I've heard this from a lawyer, is if there's a squabble over lines or whatever and you can't settle it, you can go to court over it.
Oh, for sure. Oh, yeah. This can very easily end up in court. And a subdivision proceeding is a quasi-judicial proceeding, but it is not a court. So we can't, that's the problem, is that we can't really take sides in this, in my opinion. The court is the only one, the Supreme, not Supreme, the Superior Court of Vermont is the only one authorized to really settle land boundary issues. Surveyors have the authority to give them testimony. So that's what we, I think, we as a board recommended last meeting.
That is the result of the conversation I had with my attorney.
Which is the result?
The boundaries are where they're measured to be. If there was a monument set, that is the location of that. You know, you can't just, you can't just claim that, you know, that's not where it belongs. That would create chaos throughout the town. It became known, all of a sudden, I want more land, I just go and say that this isn't where the monument belongs. If a surveyor comes along and he says If a surveyor comes along and he says this is where the survey monument is, or should be, and not all of them of that vintage had those type of monuments that you're referring to, a lot of them sometimes were just plain pieces of rebar.
Sure, we're talking, we're not talking about it, you know, an ancient monument here. We're talking about something set, I'm assuming at some point in Ralph Michaels' career, so from the seventies through early two thousands.
There's the date on Charlie's survey. Was registered as nineteen eighty.
You know, had the, you know, I think, I don't know what kind of survey he used, but it's probably Total Station. I mean, those things are known to be extremely accurate, so we're not talking about eighteen eighty, eighteen sixty survey here that talks about, you know, plus or minus twenty acres.
My parents were very, very lenient.
Plus and minus.
Were very lenient with the boundaries of the property. If they wanted to push the lawn and move over to the trees, they never complained. I carried that same, that same mentality. But now that we're talking about, and it wasn't going to be an issue, why wouldn't it even care? I got blindsided at this last meeting. I didn't even know that this was an issue because I was never talked to about any of this.
About what?
About this whole conflict. I didn't realize it was a conflict.
I'm gonna just maybe-
Until I came to this meeting last month, that I discovered that this issue was there.
I don't think there was an issue at the last meeting. We were coming, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We were coming because we heard that you were going to try to put a road over our well, that we have a deed directing to your property, to the farm, that we didn't want to be ruined. So, and then all of a sudden, you said everything's fine and dandy, and boom, now we have an issue with a pin that's in the back corner. And then you said you didn't have an issue, so then it was brought to their attention, and here we are.
Yeah, the way I remember it, that's, that's right. So my understanding is that your neighbors are here for a reason that had absolutely nothing to do with this pin in question, had to do with where you proposed to put an access road. We haven't even gotten to that issue.
I haven't even proposed anything.
We understand. And that's probably something also that's somewhat frustrating to everyone else here, is that we haven't even gotten to the issue that they're concerned about. Although, the reason we're discussing this, from my memory, has nothing to do with any issues brought by your neighbors. We were, we heard information that we were not expecting from you, that possibly someone had moved a pin. That came up last meeting, and that put an immediate halt to everything. So we can't really go forward when there is a confirmed boundary dispute and an allegation of criminal behavior. You understand? They didn't make that up. They wouldn't have said they moved a pin. Do you remember saying, I mean, I think you just repeated it again today, that they bulldozed over a boundary line and marker? Am I making this up?
Do you have that map in Charlie?
No, I don't. But am I misunderstanding what you said today? That there was a stone wall that included-
This is a-
Can you please just answer this? Was there a stone wall that had a boundary marker within it, or as part of it, that you're claiming that your neighbors removed or altered?
Yeah.
There weren't no stones.
Which, which one are you working at supposedly?
That from Charlie's survey, their, their, the farm. And it clearly depicts this stone wall running straight all the way down to my field in this corner. That stone wall. And it's gone now. That is gone from the edge of their property. The whole thing has disappeared.
Okay, hold on a second. Let me, let me ask you a question, please. One second. I promise, I'll come right back to you. You'll be next.
No, no problem.
So, yeah, you can. So what this also shows me is for there are four corners to this lot-
Correct.
That say IPS. Are you aware of that, what that means?
Yes, iron pin set.
Do we know if they were actually set? As a result of this survey, were iron pins set?
When it got surveyed?
As a result of this survey-
They set them that day, Deb did it.
I was with Deb Daniels when I helped her.
As a result of this survey, those, because it's not always the case, and I know Ralph, I knew him, he didn't always set them when he said he would. But so I'm, wanna confirm that in response to this survey that was done, where it says iron pin set, they were in fact set?
Yes.
Four of them, each corner. Okay. So are you saying that since that was set, that's now removed? Or moved?
That whole stone wall is gone.
Well, independent of that, what I heard earlier, you say is, in connection with that-
That stone, that pin that belongs in this corner right here is now way over here.
On the front lawn?
Where the stone wall is still, and the stone wall is still in existence beyond that.
We're gonna go to Carol for a minute.
So, that's where the pin is, on that.
This is, this is showing her.
We're gonna just try to do one conversation so we can all hear, but do you wanna be-
Here, Laurie, look. So here, this is what you're saying, this stone wall's gone, it, yeah, the stone wall in between the two pins is gone.
That's our lawn. That's our pin. That was our lawn. That's our lawn.
But when the surveyor takes the data points, is what I'm saying, is it indicates that it's not where it belongs. That's all I'm saying. Like, the surveyor, when they use the data from the surveys, indicates that it's in the lawn, not in that stone wall that was left.
So you're saying-
On the stone, it was in the stone.
This is where we're disputing. This is old Turnpike Road. I thought we were disputing this back pin.
We're not talking about, is it, is it both corners on the front access?
I'm gonna assume that, I'm only gonna go with what my surveyor told me.
That pin is on that right-hand side and on the left-hand side of the driveways. On each side of that drive, there's a pin. In the back, there's two pins.
I believe that, I believe that in my, just drive down the road, that I observed two monuments along the road. Except one of them is about forty feet beyond where it's supposed to be.
Forty feet left.
Forty feet is, is a, by, for a size, a lot this size, that is only two hundred and thirty, forty feet is a, is a substantial difference.
But I thought we were disputing this pin back here in the lawn.
Are we also disputing the back corner?
I haven't looked at that far.
Of course. I thought the last meeting, it was the back wall.
That's what I thought. It was that back right corner, if you're standing in front of the house.
We really do need to get the surveyor.
Yeah, we need to get the surveyor, because we're getting nowhere.
Yeah, I think this is, we're, we're not-
Is this your surveyor, your surveyor?
This, this is a blow up of their survey. We recorded it. I just blew this up to be able to show that there is a stone wall that was there.
So there's an old, either drive or-
There was no drive.
Right, so let me, there's two parallel lines that go away from Turnpike Road on that survey. Can you show that to me again?
There is, it was, gotta, had to be a century ago, if it was. But there was a lane behind their property.
So, so there is an indication on this survey. So I'll explain why I'm asking this in a moment. Let's just get to the question. Thank you for your questions, by the way.
This map shows it better. This, this lane continues up through here, and it really stops on the one side at the back corner of that one square here.
On the one we were just looking at.
Don't worry about our piece of property, when you've got all that around us.
Okay, so, so this survey also shows this lane-
Correct.
For, I don't know, driving cattle or whatever it was.
This is my fence in that old field.
This indicates that this was a stone lined lane. And it's shown here as well. Is there any indication of that lane that exists today?
The stone wall's still in there.
Both sides of the lane.
Yeah, because they took all the stones out of the field and pushed them up along the edge of it.
Okay, but is the part that's in the field still present?
Yeah, this stone here, this corner is about a year, still here. And there's still partial stone here in the front and on this side.
Is this part still present?
Yes.
In its entirety?
Yes.
Okay. So, but you're-
Because that's not my boundary, that's just the edge of the field.
Okay. So one of the things we're hearing, and there's, there's a lot, is we're hearing that this corner, this front corner along the road, was moved by, what I'm hearing, forty feet.
Close to forty feet.
So let me tell you, so what is the width of this lane?
I don't know.
Not forty feet?
No.
So what you were saying is that if we go out and look today, or tomorrow, when the light comes back, that this monument is now west of this?
No.
Well, then it's not true that that moved forty feet, is it? It can't be. Right? I'm just trying to get to the bottom of the statements that are being made here. But you follow me? That this lane is not a forty feet right of way. It was not, right?
My, no, the whole lane isn't, but the, that-
So then how could this have moved to the west forty feet, ever? If it is still to the east of the western boundary? You see what I'm saying?
I have the different, you know, drafts that Daniel sent down to me, as far as like where he located the pin, and where they directed and told him that the pin was, because there is a piece of rebar in the existing stone wall that's there, right at the very end of where they left off, where they stopped, you know, putting it under the lawn to fill it in.
No, there's a-
That whole, that whole lot was basically just a piece of-
Is anyone contending that this lane, either side marked by stones, has been moved or altered in any significant-
There is no, there is no-
They're all there. The stone walls are still there.
So both, so a competent surveyor will be able to find lots of ways to re, if you're, so let's just take for a moment, and we'll assume that you're right about this being altered or moved, or damaged, okay? A competent surveyor can reconstruct that position based on this, based on this, based on all kinds of other pieces of evidence. And that's why we need to talk to them and find out if this is actually really-
And that's what I just paid big money to have done, was he took that data, and he created that location.
Tonight, I'm gonna, do you have the, the application form? We're gonna ask that you take this back and add both your surveyor and your lawyer as authorized agents. And do we agree that we ask them all to come to the next meeting so we can get to the bottom of this? Does this seem-
That's what I thought we were discussing.
John, I have a question here, too, when you have a moment.
On his map, why, what's this over here then?
Supposedly that's what his-
Yeah, surveyor's, mainly. Said where the pin is, where they come out.
See, I thought we were disputing that back right there, saying that it was moved out.
This one's still in the stone wall, this one's still in the wall, back to that corner, and this one's on the edge out there.
Do you have this one on the ground?
Yeah, it's up there. That's the one they supposedly couldn't find.
This is the first draft that he sent me. And that's when he pointed out that that monument was not where it was supposed to be.
So where's the next map of his that he drew up?
It'd be this one here. It'd be, have to be this, because they can't survey it without making this line in here, say.
So that right there does not look like there's forty feet right there on his map?
Getting forty feet from.
Right there, little common sense, not showing no forty feet.
Forty feet years ago, Bob, I asked you to take, come down and ask you, show you where all the pins were, because you didn't know where they were.
And there's always been an issue since thirty-three years I've been there. It's always been an issue.
So what this says, what this says from your surveyor is, I can't read the exact figures, but it tells you the, it says some sort of monument, I think it's point seven feet above ground, AG, with a licensed surveyor mark of one thirty. A capped monument.
See, right there.
Present where I think, you know, people are saying it is.
Physically, there is a monument there.
This is what you call physical evidence.
Well, when, no, that's a picture.
No, he's saying that there is evidence on the ground above, a certain height above-
It doesn't match the locations as they measure it. When they start measuring it, it does not match that location.
Yeah, I think there's not much more we can do. We need-
John, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If I recall correctly from our last meeting on this, the commission encouraged the applicant, Mr. Garrow, and his neighbors to meet and discuss this, or at least to have their respective surveyors or attorneys meet and discuss it to try to resolve this. And so my first question is, did that happen? Did you folks get together and try and resolve this?
Why are we gonna pay something if it's not our issue? Is my question, not trying to be rude, but is he gonna compensate us if this is correct?
I was, I was just asking whether that, whether there was any conversation between the interested parties or not.
No.
Because we left the last meeting, it was my understanding that, that John was going to forward Debbie McHae's or Daniels' information to them so to take a talk to her, because she had the other end of the tape.
I did send the information.
Okay. I hadn't heard anything whether or not they had any contact or, you know. I've already paid my guy to come down and do this. Every time I have him come back, it costs me more.
Well, I'll say this, Dad paid to have Ralph Michaels do that, and Ralph-
Not that one he didn't. That's, that's-
Okay, this one.
That one.
That one, your dad paid Ralph.
Can you visibly look at the difference in the lines and the dimensions? That's the one that your dad paid to have done. Look at the linear footage on the frontage of that one, and then look at the linear footage on the front of this one.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. As a surveyor, when he measures it and he uses his, his information and the, and the equipment that he uses to locate this stuff.
Well, that's the way they are. I helped Deb Daniels measure it with a tape measure.
And Aunt Evelyn was there.
Yeah, and she didn't even hold it, even a fifty-foot tape measure. No, I'm just saying, it just, it is what it is. The pins ain't gonna be moved, and I was just worried about a driveway, that was it.
That was only our issue, not the driveway going there.
I don't care what happens.
Carol?
Yes?
How big is that lot? Is that one acre?
It's one point one two.
Okay. And, Mr. Garrow, how big is the property that you're looking to subdivide altogether?
The relevance of that? It's like seventy-
Can you answer my question?
It has not been completely surveyed yet. And it had been assessed with the town, I'd been paying taxes on like seventy-six acres, but it's actually only like maybe seventy-one, I think. I haven't really tallied up the total acreage yet from my survey.
So, yeah, I'm just gonna offer an observation, which is from what, what I'm hearing, and of course, I could be hearing it wrong, but there's, I don't think there's any disagreement about the size of the one acre lot. It's either one point one or one point two, or somewhere between the two of those. And that your neighbor's principal concern has to do with establishing the boundaries, but even more so making sure that there's no driveway put over where their well is. And judging from the state's maps, that area is also a wetland, which would be a problematic place to put a road as well. That, it just, my observation is that this is something that the parties could rather easily resolve among themselves without the acrimony. You, you all, I mean, maybe it's inappropriate for me to say this, but it seems like you all could pick a within twenty feet, and it's not gonna make any difference, material difference to the size of the one acre lot, or to your seventy-some-odd acre lot, Mr. Garrow, and you could just resolve this if you, if you would talk to each other.
The problem that arises with that scenario is all of the data, all of the documentation that's recorded in the town office down here, in the fire, in the land files reflect the location. So what happens thirty, forty years, fifty years down the road, they come in and somebody surveys us again, and they find that monument that hasn't been relocated on the deeds in all of the, all of the, the land forms. What happens then? I would act, if this was all just to go away, I don't have any issues. We're just giving them-
This could very easily go away. So, we, as, and I agree with everything-
But that was never an option that was presented to me, or given to me, any aware.
Okay, we're gonna allow it to be an option. So I agree with everything Andy has said. The only reason, so just for your own benefit, you should know that the only thing really holding this up right now, at least for moving to the next step of the process, is you taking exception with where the monuments are physically located on the ground. If you, or you call it stipulate, if you and, and your neighbors just agree, even if you, in your heart, you don't think it's right, if you just to move forward, you agree with the where they're on the ground is where they will be, then things can move forward. So, to answer your question, how this will help in the future when something is recorded, that's precisely why it's a problem for this commission to record, as a, in order to do a subdivision, you have to record a new survey. And so what we're trying to figure out is, we're not gonna allow a cer, you may, allow a survey to be recorded, which we know is disputed by the neighbors. If, in, just one second, I'll let you say something. If you agree even today to have your surveyor use the location that is on the ground, where that pin is, and call that the corner, we move past this issue and we can move forward with your application. At least pending the other things like the wastewater. Is that sort of accurately, or at least a follow-up from what you were saying, Andy? Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like just some neighborly conversations and compromise could resolve this piece of it without a lot of, you know, you might stand on principle and say it's not right, but on the other hand, failure to resolve it's gonna have its own costs and delays, and I would just encourage the parties to work something out. And I think it, you know, it's it's a case where the, the principle of the matter is, is while I understand it, it's an obstacle to moving forward in a way that would be satisfactory to everybody, or ought to be.
And at least to Andy and me, it seems like the effect it would have on the totality of your acreage and the proposal for your subdivision is zero. It would have no impact on, you would not be losing land, you would not be losing any important, you know, features, or it would not adversely impact your ability to subdivide. It seems like something that if you just agree on It seems like something that, if you just agree on that the placement of those pins is the corner, then it does sort of go away, at least move past it. Yeah, Gary?
Um, him subdivide, subdividing that, does he have to have a driveway for each one of them subdivisions where it's gonna go, or no?
There's, there's, they'll have to ask.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
They'll have to ask to put one in, but there's all that frontage, all on that field.
Yeah, I didn't know if it's up to you, because you have to subdivide.
It is part of the, it is part of the requirements to identify a prospective location for access.
Oh, I wasn't sure. If that's what he had to do when he settled.
There's only about 800 feet of it.
That's the only thing I asked. He wants to go over our water line, you know? I mean, I don't care, but I'll deal with whoever deals with him, I mean, no big deal.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, we haven't even gotten to that. You just started the exhausting part of this.
If he has to do that, that's all.
Right. So, we can get to that issue.
Yeah, okay.
So if we do that...
If you just say to your surveyor, it's nickels and dimes, so it doesn't matter, I mean, let's just use what's there. But if you want to make a fight over where the physical location is, then you're gonna go to court.
That small piece of land is not worth, my whole, the whole premise of what I'm trying to explain, or talk about here, is the consequence to all of the related documentation of them locations.
But I'm telling you that as...
So you don't care that the...
No, I absolutely care, and that's the reason we're even having this conversation with you, because if we didn't care, then I wouldn't waste my time with this. So the reason I'm spending my evening talking to you about this really piddly issue, and something that really, the courts wouldn't even entertain, to be frank with you. This thing's been in the ground for 30 years, they wouldn't even let you in the door. The reason we're spending so much time working with you on this is because you're going to record a survey if you get this subdivision approved. We want that to reflect the situation on the ground as accurately as possible, and not cause unnecessary legal problems for your neighbors. You've already told us that you have to sell these, this land. So someone else will inherit this problem, we don't want it to be part of that.
If you're okay with passing, kicking a can down the road, I...
Absolutely not. We're, we're expecting that you and your neighbors agree on the, the corner location, and whether it takes a handshake, or a new survey... Let me, let me finish, we, we have the pattern here, you've been interrupting me, I'm not liking it. So, there's many ways you can resolve this issue. You can walk over there and shake their hand and say it's done, you can update your survey to match the existing conditions on the ground, you can have your surveyor come in here and explain to us in more detail, and we prolong this process, or you can all go to court. There really is no, as far as I know, other ways out of this. It seems to me that those are in order of difficulty and expense. The handshake seems to be the easiest, the friendliest, and the other end is the other end. Um, but what we, I think, I think we all agree on this, at least we did last month, is that we can't put the town in the middle of it. Seems like we need to get this resolved. So, it doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal, I, I understand it may have been going on since your mom and dad, and who knows, this is a long, family things go on for ages, I understand that.
Hmm.
And sometimes it's hard to let it go. But it seems to me, I think what Andy's suggesting, is that we got a bigger picture for you here, literally picture, that we, we're supposed to be deciding on at some point. It seems like this is, uh, tiny stuff. But that's ultimately for you to decide, whether you wanna hold this whole thing up, um, the location of this, one or two, I'm, I'm not sure if it's the front one or the back one anymore. One or two corner markers of maybe if, you know, I don't wanna diminish it, you know, some feet on either side. I, I don't know what to tell you, I think you have to, you have to work that one out on your own and decide which way you wanna go. I think in the meantime, we can ask that, um, your surveyor come in, or be present on Zoom, which is probably the cheaper way, um, to, to have a more detailed discussion of, of his findings. My, my experience with surveyors, and I don't know yours, but my experience with, I know what Ralph would say in this case, that thing's been in the ground for 30 years, that's where it is. But I'm not a surveyor, and I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a judge. But I think you, you know, my advice to you, not as the chair, but as neighbor, you know, citizen of this town, is that, um, you're probably not gonna get very far with the courts on that matter. Um, it's been there for a long time, as far as most people can tell, that holds a lot of weight. As far as we know, it hasn't been contested up until this point. Um, so, is there anything the commission wants to add to that? I think we could probably run this one into the ground for, maybe again, no, you have anything?
If we can't, if the parties involved can't come to an agreement on what, where it is, um, would we just like to have contact with his surveyor and attorney next time we repeat this process?
Yeah, that one, yeah. Yeah, tomatoes or sauce.
Like, have us update us a week or so before, and have some sort of, somebody we can talk, somebody we can talk to.
Right.
Um, because this is getting everybody...
It's real much, yeah. So we all in agreement on that? Did everyone hear that, did the commissioners hear that proposal?
I will.
I did not quite hear it, I'm sorry.
Surveyor, relocate that pin to that position, and the only thing that I'm gonna ask is that this is the end of the, any confrontation, because the, the public comment period hasn't even entered yet.
So, we can't really determine that that says the end of any confrontation or other public comments, but if you guys can...
On their behalf, is, is all I'm asking, is, I'm asking them, I guess, on their behalf.
Well, my question, wait, my question is then, do you promise not, if, if you have to put the driveway in, I'm, I'm just saying, because they said it was part of the plan, right? That you have to show where the driveway's going?
That's usually what we expect.
That's the rule.
We cannot shut out any public comment from this meeting, from my understanding.
Okay, but I'm just saying, do you agree not to put it near the spring and the well?
Where it crosses up through and crosses the road.
I, I won't put it there.
Okay.
Because that's the only reason, that was the only reason why...
I'm not, you know, I'll put it in the field, you know, anywhere in that field that can go in.
But Bob, that was the only reason why we were here, is because we didn't want the driveway next to the spring to contaminate the spring and the well and all that, because I'm still using the spring at my house.
They could put the driveway...
So, I, I'll add one more, one more potential option here, that I didn't say in, in sort of my first, uh, go-round. If, sort of an extension of the handshake, if you and your neighbors, which is, there's a few, it's not just one lot we're talking about, Carol's lot, Tiffany's lot, Gary and... That, I don't know if there's anybody else that cares, but if you all wanted to, you know, sign something together, bring it to us and say that this is settled, we're not gonna interfere with the well or the water supply, and we agree that this, the monuments are where they are, that, that would, I think that would settle it for us, for our purposes, at least.
We'd just like to make sure, or, if, make sure he's gonna report a survey, that the pin is in the same spot that the other two surveys claim.
Having those things written on a letter to us with the neighbors all, families all...
Well, I intended to approach all of the abuders. Like, I, I've done this before, I approached them and asked them if they had any potential conflicts. I mean, and brought in documents from them stating that they had no conflicts for that public comment period.
Right. I think what I'm asking for is something a little more specific, and I'm gonna ask Andy for the, the proper terminology here. Is that what we call just a stipulated agreement, Andy?
Uh, I think so. I mean, you know, there, I think very, various different levels of formality to this thing, that could extend as far as, you know, having a new survey done, or, or just amending a survey, uh, but certainly, uh, an agreement, uh, a written agreement about where the boundaries are, and, and where, uh, a driveway will or will not be placed, um, would certainly go a long way to solving this.
Right. So, uh, based on your recommendation, I'm gonna suggest to the board that we ask, um, and we'll, we'll let everybody agree or disagree to this, we'll ask the, the group, um, Mr. Garrow and the rest of the neighbors, um, to give us an update, uh, approximately a week ahead of the next meeting, next regular meeting, um, and update us on several things. Any discussions you've had together, or agreements you may have reached on getting past this issue, both the well and, and monuments, and, uh, authorizing your surveyor and/or lawyer, whatever, to speak with us. That won't necessarily be needed if you come to this agreement in advance. But I'll ask that that happen a week ahead of time, so that we have a chance to see it. Does that sound what you were...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, preferably the surveyor probably, because he's, would probably have the most knowledge about what our questions are currently, if they, if we get that...
If we don't agree, if we don't get the agreement, then the surveyor, um, having the surveyor sign the authorized agent and, uh, be able to attend the next meeting. Do we all agree, does that sound reasonable? Do you have something to add to that?
Well, if, if the agreement could be as specific as possible.
As possible, yeah.
In other words, and I'm making something up, if you're gonna keep the monument where it is, you then say, this is the point that the survey, because I...
Or reference the survey.
The reference, so that there's no confusion going, you know what I'm saying?
My surveyor, when he sets the money, he can locate that on my, my survey.
So if that's the agreement, then there's no argument down the road.
Whatever they do, he can locate that on my survey that reflects, so that a future surveyor will have a document to go to, to find that pin again.
Right. Well, I'd say, you either have, I think there's, you either have a complete agreement between you and your neighbors on this, which would mean that we don't need to really get into details with the, the surveyor, but if you don't get that done for the next meeting, we're, we're gonna, we're asking that we speak with your surveyor and that he be authorized to speak on your behalf.
One, one other thought. Um, I, I think it would, um, be best if whatever written agreement you come to be in a form that could be recorded in the land records, uh, maybe it's styled as a boundary line agreement, or you might wanna consult with, um, lawyer just to find out the form that would make it, uh, most amenable to recording, because, uh, that is the best way to ensure that today's resolution's, the problem, uh, is durable, and this problem doesn't then, um, afflict future owners of the property.
Anybody else? Do you have anything on this? Who are you? Jim? Okay, do we agree to that? Okay.
Just as a practical matter, the original application is now by Mr. Garrow.
I'll bring it back in. I'll just go home and fill it out, right?
Yeah.
And I'll bring it back down tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So anything else on this tonight?
Oh, that's it.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay. All right, how my surveyor set that, the location of that pin?
Thank you. I'm gonna walk you off this, guys.
I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna jump into Nick, and we'll get to, remind me at the end to set the date, okay? Nick, hello, I'm sorry, that did take a little longer than I expected. I'm so sorry.
No worries. No worries, thanks for having me, it was, uh, it was a sight to behold, kudos for all.
I'm sorry, just, repeat yourself there, I didn't hear you. Can we turn this up?
Oh.
I'm gonna turn the volume up.
I, I, I'm hearing you fine, so I think it's the volume in the...
Sorry, sorry, Nick, can you repeat yourself? I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
Sure, yeah, I was just giving folks kudos for, for handling that, you know? Uh, uh, it was, it was, uh, well handled.
Um, I'm pleased to welcome, uh, Nick Stark from the Regional Planning Commission, and, um, I understand that there's a couple of things in the next couple of months that Nick would like to, you know, work with us on. Um, today, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a, uh, basically an intro to, uh, basically two things, um, the Rutland Regional Asset Mapping Project, also known as RAMP, and a Health Equity Planning Toolkit. Is that right?
Precisely, John, yeah. Uh, and the two intersect, um, so, um, yeah, I'll start off by, you know, giving you all a presentation on the Health Equity Planning Toolkit, which was developed, uh, in collaboration between the Vermont Department of Health and all of the RPCs in the state. Uh, and then I'll talk about how, uh, we're using some grant funding that was part of that project to help implement health equity, uh, as, uh, an element of the Rutland RAMP project.
Okay, great, yeah, the floor is yours.
Uh, would it be possible to get screen sharing? I have a, a presentation.
He's working on it, one moment.
Sure, sure.
He is now a co-host.
You should be able to now.
Got it. All right. Everybody seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. And y'all, all have to excuse me, I, I broke a cardinal, cardinal rule of, uh, PowerPoints here, I'm gonna be reading directly off the slides, uh, I created this presentation, um, uh, in a manner that, you know, folks who weren't able to attend might be able to, uh, you know, uh, read through it and, and get the entire gist, um, so buckle up, it's gonna be a lot of me reading what you're seeing. Um, but, uh, I'm gonna do my best to work through this, uh, as quickly as possible. Um, I know that, uh, you know, those conversations can be taxing, so, uh, don't wanna keep any later. Um, so, basically, uh, what this toolkit sets out to do, uh, is increase health and well-being in communities through planning. Um, a lot of this might seem a bit obvious, uh, as well, but, um, so, here's a quick overview of what this presentation, uh, includes, uh, it's an intro to, uh, health equity, um, including a bit of background on, uh, some of the core concepts, uh, of, of which we're gonna discuss, uh, just to make sure we all have the same definitions, uh, some strategies, um, that, uh, planning commissions and, you know, staffies can enlist, uh, to, uh, ensure equity, uh, within planning, um, then some case studies from within the state, and lastly, some smaller actionable steps that, uh, folks can take, uh, even today. Um, and then culminates in a resources page, which includes the much, much longer, uh, Health Equity Planning Toolkit, which is, uh, a really incredible document, um, you know, is, is quite a read, so that's why we created this presentation, to sort of get you, uh, over some of the, the high, uh, high points. And lastly, I'll open it up, uh, for any questions and, and thoughts, um, but I did want to, uh, you know, feel free to interject at any point if something doesn't translate or, or anything like that. Um, I will add a little asterisk right here, is that, you know, some of the strategies and, um, actual steps that you're gonna see, uh, we have created this presentation for a, a wide variety of, um, towns, um, and, uh, of different sizes, so it's, uh, you might see some stuff that doesn't necessarily fit Mount Holly, but, uh, hopefully you'll see a lot that does. Um, so, uh, a few key stats here that, you know, provide some background on why we're even talking about this. So, a person's lifespan is determined far more by lifestyle choices and environmental factors, and less, uh, and far less by genetics. Um, and even within Vermont, over 60% of residents face a risk of chronic disease, um, and the associated healthcare costs of those diseases exceed $300 million annually. Um, we also have a very, or not very, but we have a high substance abuse rate, uh, among youth, uh, which is another reason, uh, that a lot of the tools that you'll see later, um, have caught people's eye within the state. Um, so the idea here is, you know, there's not, uh, of course, there's a lot that we can do for folks that are, um, you know, already, uh, suffering from chronic disease, but there's actually a quite, uh, quite a wide array of tools that we can implement, um, to help save future generations, uh, of those, uh, of those risks. Um, and the, the real thing is that it's a money saver, right? Is that if we invest a bit of money now in some, some elements that are gonna help reduce the number of people with chronic diseases, uh, we, uh, end up reducing the, the financial burden of, of associated health costs, uh, healthcare costs in the long term. Um, so that's all to say that, you know, um, a person's health outcome is, uh, influenced, you know, uh, in an inequitable way currently. Um, so discrimination based on income, class, ethnicity, sexual identity, ability, and age, um, as well as traditional zoning, uh, and bylaws can... can affect what resources are available to people. So basically, you know, if you're in, and the thing that I always point out here is that technically, as, you know, a primarily rural state, the majority of our residents are already at a disadvantage, because, like, covering the entirety of the United States, rural populations have, are disadvantaged in terms of access to healthcare, community assets, all these sort of things that we know can help prevent these, these diseases and prolong, you know, health and quality of life. Let me skip over this little Shelburne, actually I shouldn't, because every time I give this presentation, people say, you're not talking enough about food. So in Shelburne, they, they put together a reformers market and use a lot of health equity elements and use health equity as a lens by which to view how they were developing the market, so that they can make sure that as many people as possible could access, you know, fresh food and, and make sure that their diets were healthy. So lastly, the toolkit's purpose again, it was developed to guide communities toward healthier, more inclusive environments through improved planning, policy and infrastructure, with a focus on vulnerable populations, and those vulnerable populations are the folks that we saw in the contributing factors section. So here's some key concepts, and I know a lot of these might seem quite obvious, but I do wanna just read through them to make sure that everybody's on the same page about these definitions. So health equity is ensuring everyone has a fair and just opportunity to achieve their highest level of health. This involves addressing economic, social and environmental barriers. Health inequities are the differences in health outcomes that are systemic, avoidable and unjust. These disparities are influenced by factors such as socioeconomic status, race and geographic location. Wellbeing is a comprehensive measure of health that includes physical vitality, social connectivity, that's a big one, and a sense of purpose and belonging. So a lot of the tools and solutions that are detailed later in this presentation come back to, you know, social connectivity. There is a sort of a quiet crisis currently with isolation and, and loneliness, particularly within Vermont. So environmental impact on health is recognizing that health starts in our homes, schools, workplaces and communities, and that the design of these environments can either support or hinder healthy living. And community planning's role, that's where you all come in, is the strategic integration of health equity principles into planning and zoning practices to create environments that promote healthy lifestyles for all community members, especially vulnerable populations. All right, that was a lot. Any questions before I dive any further? Okay, great. So here's some strategies, and some of these, you know, you all might be steps ahead on. I know a lot of folks have engaged in, you know, bylaw modernization projects in the past couple of years, and I took a cursory look through your town plan, and I think it already identifies, you know, some health equity issues, so. In terms of plans and bylaws, ensuring that bylaws reflect local plans that prioritize mixed use, connected communities, that promote vibrant and healthy living spaces. Quality of place, so enhancing social interaction and mental health through well-designed public spaces and accessible welcoming community centers. In housing, prioritizing affordable and accessible housing, implementing zone reforms to allow for diverse housing types, supporting both vulnerable populations and the broader community. In transportation, enhancing walkability and bikeability, bikeability. Develop safe, accessible transportation networks that connect people to essential services, jobs and recreational opportunities. And recreation, creating inclusive, accessible green spaces, plan for parks, trails and recreational facilities that cater to all ages, abilities and backgrounds, fostering a sense of community and wellbeing. So there's some great examples of how some of these strategies have already been implemented within Vermont. In housing, in Rutland County's own Killington, they addressed severe housing shortages affecting the local tourism industry by going through a bylaw zoning modernization process that allowed more uses, reduced lot, dimensional requirements and eased the review process. They also aim to promote development patterns that foster health equity and community design, so making sure that, you know, we're, in large part, a lot of the lessons of the last half century have been how medium density and suburban sprawl really is a painful hindrance on health for our communities, largely due to the lack of walking bikeability and the lack of shared, shared spaces within those communities. So a lot of community design that you're gonna see in the future really does take those lessons into account. And they did so in Killington. In Johnson, I'm sure you've all heard of the Memorial Valley Rail Trail, you know, and it's not to say that's a multi-decade project and no small feat, but some of the smaller things that they've done included expanding rest stops, that introduced visitors to community resources, and then also developing a bike rental business and converting former mill properties into housing and retail space. In North Hyde Park, they piloted a program that tested safer pedestrian crossings and traffic calming on Route 100. And that was all in the pursuit of aiming to restore vitality in the village poor and encourage walking and biking. So I'm sure you all anecdotally have noticed cars are getting bigger and faster, and it really, it, it seems sometimes like an insurmountable problem, but there are a lot of proven techniques that encourage folks to slow down, and there's a lot of low-cost solutions that, that manage to do that as well, and that's what we're talking about there in a pilot program. And in my very own Polley, I didn't choose to put this in, I, that, it's not biased, but following the closure of the Green Mountain College, focused on leveraging outdoor recreation to strengthen the local economy, a number of new mountain bike trails were developed, cementing Polley's place as a hub for both the cycling community and which had a ripple effect of enhancing physical activity and local business tied to outdoor recreation. All right, so some smaller actionable steps, and these are things that can be, you know, implemented in all this, every facet of, of your work, and a lot of these are gonna feel, you know, quite familiar as you've gone through the town plan process already. So engaging with the community, conducting outreach and engagement efforts to include diverse community voices in the planning process, and ensuring plans reflect the needs of all community members, especially those historically marginalized. This is no small task. It is something that the RRPC has taken on wholeheartedly through our regional plan engagement process. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we are here as a resource. If you find yourselves asking, you know, how can we engage with people that don't normally show up to our planning meetings or our open houses, do reach out to us. We are developing a toolkit, and we're learning a lot very quickly about, you know, how to make sure that everybody's voices are heard. Reviewing and revising policies, examining current zoning laws, policies and bylaws to identify barriers to health equity, implement revisions that promote inclusive, healthy community design. Implement infrastructure improvements, so this means prioritizing infrastructure projects that enhance accessibility and connectivity, such as sidewalks, bike paths and public transit to encourage active living. Foster partnerships, build partnerships with local health organizations, nonprofits, businesses and regional planning commissions to leverage expertise, resources and support for health equity initiatives. This, I think, is sort of like, I can't speak to, you know, the, the setting in, in Mount Holly, but I, what I see happening in a lot of small towns is everybody sort of has their head down, working on their individual avenues to better their, their homes and their communities, and I don't think, I can say at least in Polley, it's an ongoing issue that these efforts are siloed, and I think, you know, taking the opportunity to reach out to other organizations in your town and checking in about what they're working on, you often find that there's room for collaboration, and it ends up sometimes saving everybody a bit of work in the, in the long run. Utilizing resources and tools, so taking advantage of available tools, guidance and funding opportunities provided in the Health Equity Planning Toolkit and from state and federal sources to support planning implementation. So here's where I tell you that the Health Equity Planning Toolkit is actually a two-part toolkit. The first is a large presentation on health equity and really dives into a lot of the concepts that are, we're glossing over here in depth. But the second part is a really, really big resources toolkit, so it's filled with amazing examples, opportunities, grants, anything that you, you might need is packed in there. So you'll see that at the end of the presentation, but highly recommend going through that. There's so much out there, and that's another area that the RRPC can assist you all with, so. Monitoring and evaluating progress, so establishing metrics and regularly assessing progress towards health equity goals, and using findings to refine strategies and sure, continue to align them with community needs. You all, I'm sure, are already pros at this, having gone through, just finished your, your town plan. Okay, almost there, guys. Resources and support, here are the links. The Vermont Department of Health is a really great hub on health equity. So if anybody, you know, if you start talking about this and somebody goes like, what, what the heck are you talking about? I point them to that. It has a lot of great documentation. Of course, the Health Equity Planning Toolkit and Resources Guide, those are available on the LCPC website right there, and I'll, I'll be sending this presentation out to John Hu, if we can forward it to you all as well. And lastly, ARP, Vermont Health Equity Hub. ARP has lots of amazing funding opportunities and programs and webinars around health equity in relation, of course, to folks that are older in age. Okay. How are we feeling? Any pressing questions or thoughts? All right, appreciate your attention. So that wraps up this segment of the presentation. Feel free to reach out to me if you want to discuss anything further in depth. And what this allows me to do now is kind of set the stage of health equity and how we're hoping to integrate those principles into our planning. And one of the ways that we're doing that first is through RAMP. So for those of you who do not know, I'm gonna show you a quick little video and hopefully, that doesn't look like, that is coming up. Let me start sharing again. All right, let me know if the audio doesn't work on this, all right?
No audio so far.
Okay, well, I apologize, I'm not quite sure how to, maybe I could do.
When he shares his screen, at the bottom of the window, there should be a share audio checkbox. I started to share his screen, so I might have to go out and come in again.
What I'm being, the information, you want to come over here and tell them? So we have an expert here.
I don't know about that, it's Zoom.
Share sound.
Share sound.
Yeah, so when you begin your screen share, so you might, to start over, yeah, when you begin your screen share, I think in the Zoom window where you choose what screen or window you're gonna share, I think at the bottom of it, there should be a button that's gonna say, share my audio also.
So, okay, let me try that one more time. Thanks for bearing with me, thanks. All right, let me know if this goes.
Imagine a gateway that opens up the world right in your backyard. Welcome to the Rutland Region Asset Mapping Project, or RAMP, a unique initiative designed to bring the wonders of our region directly to you. RAMP is not just any map. It's a tailored guide crafted from your input, designed to overcome barriers and make exploring our region accessible to everyone. Discover places where you can relax, play and learn, all within reach of your home. What sets RAMP apart? It's built on what's important to you. By tuning into your preferences, we're developing a mapping solution that's unique, aimed at overcoming barriers and enriching your experiences with both the great outdoors and the rich tapestry of indoor cultural and historical sites. We're curious about what you look for when planning a day out. Is it accessibility features, pet friendly spots? You tell us what info you see and we'll work to make it available on RAMP. Your insights will help shape a platform that empowers all of us to explore more freely and connect more deeply with our surroundings. Explore hidden gems. Connect with your community. Discover the beauty of our region through RAMP.
Great. So yeah, you know, the overall concept here is we're trying to get folks out, out of their homes and enjoying all the incredible assets that Rutland has to offer. So one of the first elements of this project that we embarked on was we put out a health equity survey and asked people, what are those barriers that are keeping you from going to spend time at these assets or, you know, going out on trails and that kind of thing? And the resounding answer was that people just don't have the information. They don't know what's out there, which, you know, for some of us, it seems a little wild, but, you know, I think for somebody who, who doesn't have any free time or is new to the area, there isn't that resource currently. And where the, the health equity component comes in is that we're looking to go one step further from what Google Maps might offer and ask people directly, like, what information is it that you need to feel comfortable about where you're going? To identify places that you know are gonna be, like, accessible, and then also, you know, giving folks the, the opportunity to ask more information of those places as well. So this is all to say, what we're doing currently is populating the map with these points of interest, and they include historical, cultural and recreational assets. So in the coming months, you'll probably see me again. I'm gonna come back with a map and a spreadsheet, and I can actually even give you a little preview right now of what that is gonna look like. So I've started pre-populating, pre-populating the map with the National Register, historic places, trails, all that kind of stuff. And what I'm gonna be asking of you all is to help me identify which of these assets makes sense to keep on the map, which of them, you know, might be missing that aren't represented in this pre-populated map, and then also, you know, help me fill in those data points that are gonna help people get out and enjoy everything that the region has to offer.
Can you zoom in on towns for us?
Sure.
It's also a black car, I don't know what that is, but. That's Mount Tabor.
Sorry, I've got something in the way.
There it is.
So I can show you.
That's Star Lake, Wild Lake. That's Star Lake Wildlife Management Area, I'm guessing? Oh, well...
It's a boat launch, I think.
Well, we're going to have to work on the location.
Sure.
Yeah, what's that, school playground?
Works.
Yep.
Yeah, court and fields.
Yep, and what's the...
I'm guessing that if there's soccer fields or something.
I'm looking at the orange must be Crowley cheese.
That's right.
What's other orange or orange down, we wrote down all of a cemetery?
I don't see it, oh, at the top, on Dolly Road, there is, that's got to be Corbu.
Not quite sure, this one or...
No, another orange square in the upper left.
Under the box.
That's got to be the Corbu. Yep, schoolgirl house, that is known as Corbu.
Yeah, trying to get to it's fun.
So yeah, this was, you know, meant to just be a primer and let you all know that this is something that we're working on, and, you know, I'll come back to you all with, you know, some more time and a better mechanism to, you know, receive your input and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But yeah, I suppose before we wrap up, any questions or thoughts or...
No, so you wanted to come back and chat with us, you want that to be next month, or do you need a little more time, or just for, you want to be in touch about that?
Yeah, I'll, let's be in touch, I don't want to make a commitment on the fly, I have to get through my calendar and stuff, but I'll reach out, I'm going to send you the presentation to share with the rest of the planning commission, and we can chat offline.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I'm going to try and combine an issue that's in Belmont, but with what you said, and I'm not sure how it works, so it's like a hypothetical. Right now, Star Lake is weed-infested, if you will, with invasive species, and the state has not allowed much to be done because they've converted it to a, what was it, dam swamp or something like that?
It's a wetland.
It's a wetland, supposedly, that was dammed. So with the health part you're talking, you know, the map and the health part, because it's a major recreational, it used to be, major recreational area, do you, with the first presentation, would you be, like, involved with being between, let's say, the town and the state and trying to come up with a scenario to address the issue within the wetland, if you will, or the dammed wetland?
To make it more useful.
Make it more useful to, and it's a hypothetical, but it's like, how would the whole program work together is what I'm trying to...
I think that's a fantastic question, and like, you know, I know, initially, I would not insert myself during the state and the town to act as that role, but I think that it does highlight one of the really important benefits of this asset mapping project, is that at the end of it, it's not just folks and tourists that are going to have, you know, this comprehensive view of each of our municipalities and our region as a whole, but it's something that the planning commissions are going to have. So you're going to be able to toggle, you know, where are the, I mean, for you folks, not as relevant, but like, where are the transportation, public transportation places? Where are the recreational trails? You know, where is our village center? And being able to utilize that as a planning tool, so we can say, you know, here's the core cluster of our village, and there's no walkable trails here, or, you know, to your point, here's this lake, and this really does represent the one walkable recreational asset in our area, is there anything that we could do that would, you know, help, you know, further establish it as a place that people want to go and spend time recreating? I think that's sort of where Ramp can assist in that health equity element, is making sure that we have that view of what are our assets, how accessible are they, and then bring that to a different program and say, like, here's where we're at, can you help us get to the next stage?
All right, yeah, I guess what I was asking is the regional would help mediate with the state.
So I'm here to...
I'm here.
I think that's kind of what I would do.
All right.
All right, Nick, is there anything else tonight?
I think that's it. Thank you all for your time.
Well, thank you for your patience, and thanks for the presentation, and I'll look forward to you sharing that with me, and I'll send it to everybody as soon as I get it. So thanks again.
Appreciate it. Have a good one, guys.
You too.
Thanks so much.
All right, we're going to jump back to our deliberative session, how about next Wednesday at seven o'clock? Does that work? Twenty-fourth?
Let me check my calendar.
Well, there goes line dancing.
Twenty-fourth looks okay for me. Twenty-fourth at seven is okay for you, Andy?
Yes, he did.
Seven Eastern, okay.
I'll make it.
You make it work?
Yeah, I'll make it.
All right, let's put it in.
Twenty minutes, no longer.
I'm going to break your heart, but it's only for us.
That's fine.
I didn't think in mind.
You want to masturbate as me?
So it is something that we're going to have to handle on our own as the administrative officer. As a clerk, you would be entitled to attend as the administrative officer, not, because you will have to ultimately send out what we decide, so we want that to be separate. All right.
Do you want me to do a skeleton outline based on previous ones that you can then fill in? Or maybe you already do that?
I think we can do that part. Yeah, I appreciate the offer. I think that's typically what we have done, is copy the last one and modify it to meet parameters of the current. This one, I think, will be more or less straightforward, based on basically no testimony whatsoever.
You shouldn't be too many parameters to worry about.
Okay, yeah, and whether we have a draft or anything by then, I can't commit to that, but I think we will have a pretty good understanding on where we're going by then, hopefully, if not already. Okay, good, so let's see, let's get speed through the rest of this.
And this does not have to be by Zoom, because it's private.
Well, we're going to need Andy.
Oh, right.
Yeah, no, we won't be noticing this, so there's no, it's not allowed, we'll have to close the...
When do you do back?
And Peter, we, I think, well, that's a good question, whether we can just set, we can handle the Zoom on our end, right, just like we used to do for special meetings. This cannot be broadcast, so I think, yeah, we'll be able to set that up on our own, right?
I can...
Just like usual.
I can, we can chat about, you know, if you want to review, but we'll make it work this evening.
Yep, okay. John?
Other option would be doing it by telephone.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, if someone just calls by cellphone at seven o'clock, I'm not sure there's any visuals that will be necessary for our deliberative session.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to need to look at the survey or not, but...
But I also have a copy of it, so...
Oh, all right, well, then maybe we'll just do phone.
Yeah, this is a super simple.
And we have the office phone, so, all right, well, let's just plan to do it, meet here in person for local people, and we'll call Andy on the office phone. Works for me, sounds easier.
It shouldn't take long.
Okay, perfect. So that's the twenty-fourth, April twenty-four, seven PM. All right. Town plan adoption. The town plan was duly adopted by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Woohoo. We're done.
Officially.
So there was, as far, I missed the actual, I logged in for the six o'clock meeting, but it was actually in the five-thirty meeting and then the seven o'clock meeting, so I called the seven o'clock meeting, and it was like a footnote, well, our hearing was a, like, opening the hearing, any comments, closing the hearing, that's the hearing. And then at the end of the meeting, the regular commissioners' meeting, they did the vote, and it was, you know, they liked it, so...
What date was that?
So we're all done. Just in time for the next Monday, the Belmont Village Center designation renewal is going to be heard, application is going to be heard by the village downtown, the downtown program, or the Vermont Downtown Program. The communication I got from them is that it's going to sail through. So they anticipate no issues, they said we didn't even need to attend, they'll let us know afterwards. So that's good news.
Do you have an email? I got permission from the board on Monday to send that. I can either mail it or email it.
Do I have, I mean, I can send you his email if you just want, or I'll scan it and send it. They, or just put it in our file, they, yeah, Richard is the one I communicated with, and he said we are all set, like, he thought it was...
If you needed, I mean, I had to wait for board approval.
Yeah, I know, okay, well, we'll put it in the file and I'll send it off to them. I don't think they're going to need it, but I will send it. Thank you. That's it, I'll let you know when we have our next meeting. Upcoming meetings, we're meeting next Wednesday and at the usual time, oh my God.
May fifteenth.
May, isn't that wild? May fifteenth, is that what it is?
That's crazy. What happened?
That's what it is. Yep. No members of public. Peter, you want to say anything?
Good job.
All right.
I'm getting the adoption letter.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else, we're out of here. Meeting adjourned, thank you.